Hello and welcome back to a new episode of the Walheim Building Sites. And this is part 2 of the village council hall. And with this, we're gonna be decorating all of this hall and putting up some lights and some decorations around the room to make it look nice. Give the major an office, give the major and his wife a bedroom over here, so they can live in comfort in this place. That's what we're going to be doing. And we're gonna be starting off by putting everything I have in my pocket I brought with to do decorations here. In this box here, because, well, we need that. We need another box. I have brought a lot of stuff to be decorating with. Okay, let's start by putting up some lights, because it's gonna be dark in here without windows if we don't have light. So we are going to put some lights up all around the place. On every side here. How high did I put that? Okay, like just above the door here. And here. And yeah. And we're gonna be starting off with the bedroom here. We can have the dragon bed in here, hopefully. That's gonna be... Hmm, it's a little too big, huh? Let me try and put that right here. Can I walk here still? No. That's not gonna work, so we're gonna have the small beds. I need to zoom in a little bit, so I can see what I'm doing. That's the middle here. It would overlap a little bit here. So that's their bed. Now we can, well, at least walk on this side, not on the other. Try that again. Like so. Now that works, okay. And then we can have a dressing table for the lady of the house. So where is that? That's the barber station. We want that probably right here. And the major gets a chair here. And so nightstand to either side here. And let's put some night lamps on that. We want the yellow mushrooms. If I can find them. So that's gonna be some lights on their nightstands. That's very nice. And then they're gonna have some clothing boxes in here where they could store their clothing. One for the lady and one for the major. And we want some of those here, so we can display some items here. How high? Okay, about here. Looking good. And of course, we do want some banners. And the lady is liking the color red a lot, so we're gonna give her those red curtains from the mountain. That one is not sitting quite right. There we go. Now that is looking quite nice here. And of course, because she does like red, we're gonna give them some red carpet underneath here. Like so. Looking good. A red bedroom for the lord and lady, or rather, the major and his wife. Um, maybe they can have a little personal chest on a little stand here. Let me try building a little custom stand here. There they have their private things. There, we're gonna give them one of those. That's the right one. Like that. Cozy little bedroom where they can rest after a long day's work. So that's their private space. Then we have the major's office over here, and we're gonna have the cartography table in here. If I can find that one. It should be on the miscellaneous. Bettering ram cartography table. So let's see, that one can go right in this side. And we're gonna give him a chair, so he can sit here with someone, discuss things. And then he has been out and about doing some exploring in his younger years, so he has some things to display here. And that thing is in a box. An iron maze and... No, that's not the right shield. I want the silver shield here. And a spear. And that is my personal item here, that one. That is my personal item here. That one is mine. I need to be very careful, because I got a level 4 iron maze to fight monsters in the world, so we're gonna need that. Okay, um, let's put that up. Iron maze, silver shield, and the spear. The spear needs to go here, because it's a longer weapon, and the maze can go there, and the shield can go here. So that's that. And then we're gonna be having the major himself. Armor stand male. He's gonna be standing here, waiting for some people. Let me get some of clothing on him. That, and that, and where are the trousers? Okay. 1, 2, 3. There we have the major, and let's have a little welcoming pose here. Hmm, that's hard to see. Ah, that's better. It's about that. Yeah, that's not bad. Oh, and the lady of the house can stand at the hearth, do some cooking, probably. Let's do that. Armor stand. She is gonna be standing somewhere here, I guess. Like so. Let's get her dressed. I don't know what I do want her to wear. Uh, no, I... I wear that. That was not what I was thinking. Um... Dress looks nice. Okay, let's take that item. And I... Come on, you get that on you. We wanted that dress, and we want to take off that item. And get that plain brown dress. That was what we wanted her to wear. Yeah, that's good. That's good. Put that back in here. And she is going to be doing some cooking, I think. Yeah, that's good. Okay. Now she will need, if she is to be doing cooking, now she will need cauldron on here. And that big spit. Oh, that cauldron is not in a good position. It's not cooking. There we go. And then a little bit of that. And of course, the meat kettle. Where is the meat kettle? There we go. Ah, there is that. And then because this is the city hall, they are going to be having meetings in here with all of the warriors and probably even the y'all coming around. So let's have the throne here, so if the y'all's coming, they can sit and have a chat here. And then some sitting logs around here. There, and maybe one here for all the warriors and honoraries of this place. And then they are going to be having food for sure. So we're gonna be placing tables along here, where some food can be placed. Let's see, um, they are fond of the newest type from the mountains. They have onion soup discovered. And they do have the classic things here, like some sausages. And probably some berries for dessert. Some raspberries probably too. Warrior cannot eat only meat all day long. That will not keep him safe. And the lady has been having a good harvest, so she has been making some marmalade. And they are having some fancy wolf skewers. The mythologist Mettler just brought some wolf meat down. And also they are fishing people, so they got some fish here too. So there we have summer feast. The lady of the house, the wife of the major, has been cooking up for a meeting that's been coming up. And of course, then, um, they will have the banner of the city on this side, maybe on this side, the banners, and on this side, some weapons on display, as you do if you are a wiking. You do display things in your city hall. There we go. Let's see, um... Those are mine. I need to separate stuff out, so I don't accidentally hang the things I need. So, there we go. I have more weapons to be hanging up here. Serpent scale armor. That, that. Another shield. And we're gonna be having the serpent scales here to either side, I think. Those look nice. And then we're gonna be having that up here, and a maze. Okay. And some banners. Um, are we gonna go with the white ones? No, we're gonna go with the blue ones. So one here. And one here. There we go. That is not looking bad. And then I think the major will want to have a weapon close by in the night, when there is probably a raid or something. He will want to have his rusty spear close by, right by his bed, so he can get out of bed and defend the village with all the others. That is a good idea, I think. Okay, uh, yeah, we do need some block coverings in here. And we're gonna be going with wolf rods, as I told you. Olaf has been to the mountains quite a lot. And he has been gifting the major with some wolf pelts. So that one can go in here too. Nice. And then we do want some storage here, because, um, both of them will need a place to put all of their food supplies and what have you. Uh, maybe that is not good. Let's do that again. Let's all even here. And we have another board in here. The small one's peace. Another row. There we go. Looking good. So that gonna be used for another character. Both boxes are empty now. I guess we are going to put something else here. Let me think. Yeah, well, we can have some barrels stored here, because, you know, Vikings do love their mead, and they might want to have some barrels of mead for their meetings in the corner here, where they have something to drink. Also, we can put one of those tankards. Oh, there. That's a... That's a cool thing, but it comes from the dragger. It's not in a vanilla game. So you can't build that without the mod, but I'm gonna put it anyway, because it's looking cool. Um, what else do we want in here? Hmm... That's not really fitting. That's fooling stuff. Well, we don't need that. Hmm, what else is needed? Well, I guess, um, that's that. Do we want a sign here announcing that that is what we're around? Where are the 3 dots? Yeah. Announcing that that is the city hall, village hall, village council? Um, okay, let's do that. F, 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 F. Village council. Uh, well, those are not super fancy. But yeah, we're gonna roll with that. And I think we're gonna be doing a little bit more finagling here. I'm not quite sure about that entrance. It's looking a little bit bland. We have to take out those floor tiles. Those were just markers for me to where things need to go. Yeah, I think. But that is gonna be a little better. Make it look a little less bland. I think I like that. Maybe we will put some of those here. To finish that edge a little. I can make it. No, that's not right. I want it to snap here, I think. That's better. Let's do the same thing on the other side. That is looking strange here. So let's do it like that. Yep, that's better. You might also want to continue those 45-degree beams all the way to the bottom. For the extra wiking wipe. We're gonna have to be doing some more taro forming here too. Yeah, let's do that here too. Continue those all the way to the bottom. Just not have it filled in with the roof, just the beam. Yeah, that is looking better. I'm liking that. No side entrance, but we could have some weight crafting. We could have some of those in here, so... Look at that. That is cool. Meat brewing in the council hall. Nice. And then I might want to have some lights outside here. We do need some light. And I guess we go with the yellow ones. Either side. And probably in here. We'll have that a little bit backlit. That's gonna be looking nice in the night, I guess. Okay, what else? Let me see. Is there anything blue banners on the outside? Is there a way we could implement that without making it look gaudy? Ah, I don't think. That's not nice. Um... I was thinking about maybe we add another layer to that. Wrong direction, like... So... Not quite sure, but I think that could be cool. I think we're gonna be doing that. Just to have it a little more out of the ordinary. From there, and then we go straight up there. Hmm... Sun is in my face. I can see. Yeah, that's good. Sorry. Yeah, we're gonna be doing that from here to here. From here to here. Yeah. Same on the other side, probably. Okay, we go from here. That's tricky to do. Get the right spot here. And we go from here. Like that. Make that roof peak a little more pronounced. That one is hard to hit. There. And we're missing something here. Needs to be going down all the way. Yeah. I do like that. Okay. Something missing here too. Maybe we switch that one out for that one. Uh-huh, that's not quite right. That needs to go straight. Okay. I kinda want something light up there. Let me think. What about... Ah, we're gonna have to go up here. What if we put... Huh, how can we make that work? I'd like to have maybe the other one? The smaller one? And go in the dragon's mouth? Let me get a ladder. I have an idea here. I need to probably spawn in the things required for that, but what if we had those dragons spit fire? And we get that in there? Or even maybe it's behind. It's okay. Let me try. Spawn. Trophy. Circling. Hmm. Dropped all the way down there. Thank you. Oops, the game's safe and got a little... Got a little stutter there. Okay, let's see, if we attach that circling trophy. Would that item stand? Hmm. Ah, that's like in the. Up in the air, I do want that to be some wood. Oh wait, put it on the tongue. There, ah, now we got it. Let's see, can I? Item stand attach. Ooh, yes, we like that. We're gonna give those dragon circling trophies. Let me get up here, now I have to have a ladder. Because I need to see what I'm doing here. I need to place that item stand. Right on. Where is the? Yeah. Right on the tongue here. And right on the tongue. Facing outward, right on the tongue, yeah. And we spawn in two more circling trophies. Um, spawn trophy. Circling two. Okay, at least this time they did not drop all the way down there. Ah, da 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 da. Okay, and then one attaches. Look here. And one attaches, can I get to that? Yeah, ah. I think I like that. Oh yes, this is pretty neat, flaming dragons. Okay, I like that, maybe we will have trophy of a big old beast. Right in the middle there, going with the Drake theme. Let's have. Drake trophy like there. Spawn. Trophy. Hmm, dragger, dragger elite. Um, how are those flip flops called here? Hmm. Rust, nah, ice, nah. Hmm, they are called drakes? But with drakes, I don't get anything. Drake. That's the helmet, um, who? Rust. Drake, hmm. I don't know the correct thing there. I will have to look that up and. Come back with one later, okay. But I think for the build itself. It's nice, it's looking good. Let's see inside. Got the raven throne here, we got a feast prepared, we got some. Meat storage, that's the bedroom. We have to have something to hang there too. Looking nice. A major himself. In his office. Looking nice. Okay, let's do some terraforming here because. All of that does look a little bit. Um, earthman, we want to get things a little nicer here. So, are we gonna give it its grass back a little bit around the edges? Because, really. Not nice if everything is just. There. Want to maybe. Have that a little nicer. Has that hill got a little. Distressed by me. Doing all of that terraforming for that. So now we can put in more grass here. And then we're gonna be. Having a path. Going around here, I guess. I have to take out all of those. Things here. To meet up with the path. That goes to the seaside. That's cool, and then that pass here. Needs to continue too. There we go, and then we might want to have connection. From here. And I guess we are going. Um. Going to do that differently, we come here and then. We go off on this side of the. Folder. And connect to here. Yeah, I guess that's better. And fill in the grass here. Gonna be doing more building in the end. So, cool. And as a bonus extra thingy, I guess we're gonna be having. Like a town square thing here. With a big old oak tree in the middle. Let me try if I can plane that one down. A little better with that. Want that a little. More. Plane down. Yeah, I guess. We have to do some. Creative. Getting up there. Yeah. It's better. And as is befitting for. The middle of a Viking town. We want an oak tree there, where is my oak tree? Uh, there is, da da duh, why is it in the hammer? Let me see, or a. Birch sampling, birch tree, oak sampling, I want the full grown oak tree. Yeah, there, there we go. And let's bring that down a little. And maybe scale it a little, we want an oak tree, but we probably. Do not want it so big that it. Does completely take over all of it. Hmm. Like that. Big old oak tree. Let's plant. Wrong. I want that one. Because we do, no, let's do first. Um, building furniture. And I have some benches around that. So the folks can sit here and chat a little bit. In the shade of the oak tree. And then I think we are going to be having. Some of that. Because that's the main place of the. Yeah, of the town, so we're gonna be having. A little bit of. That going on here. And some grass, ah, no, I don't do that, I did that a couple of times and it went. Not good. So, let's do that not again. Little bit. Here probably. And around that folder. Yeah, that is looking good. And then we might want to be planting some bushes. Maybe even a raspberry bush or two. Because why not? And we could have small bush. In here. Ah, let's have blueberries too, why not? Like blueberries and raspberries. Here, that's pretty. Okay, and. Where are the normal scrubs? Uh, that, those, I thought what else? And I planned two of those here. Around the base of it. A little overgrown here. Uh, maybe some. Those underneath, uh. Change it up a little bit. Maybe around here too. Could even have some mushrooms tucked in underneath here. Because, whoop. They can grow here, why not? Yeah, I think this is looking nice. And we might want to have, you, you thought I would do that, yeah, you did. I want to have. Round pole fences, like. Those round pole fences go everywhere, you know? Those are Vikings, they don't walk on the grass, they get angry, people are walking on the grass. You can fence off the grass, a little bit here. Here, and then. There. That's the path over. To the other side. And then that's the path over. To. The woodcutter. Nice, I might want to have probably. A big old boulder here somewhere. Rocks, now let's find the correct rock, that one. Add one and put it down a little. Uh. That's a plains rock. That's better, that one. And go in here too. And some more. Ego should, no, we don't want the ego should, we want. Where is that small, add one. Little bit of shrubbery around here. Other nature, it's easier to do that with cultivator. Let's see, one of those. And probably a little bit of mushroomy thingies in here. Yeah, looking good. Looking good, I think. Come up here and you can, oh, we have. I'm out of wood, okay, um. We have not put in a lot of. Wood, put in some to test the fire. Need to have a fire burning here. There we go, that's it, I think that's it for this build. The city hall, like you can see it. From here, uh, no good angle. Because of everything being in front of it now, let's go to this side and see. Yeah, looking nice. I think this is a pretty. Built here where we can see all of it. And I'm gonna be sitting here on that bench and do a little bit of free fly. And we can also look at it how it looks in the night, oh. Wait, before we do that, let's put up some more torches to illuminate. The path a little bit, because I think. We do need a little bit more. Light in this city. So people can find their way home. Might want to put. Some lights here that they can. See where they are going. I think, yeah, that is a good idea. So, we're gonna be sitting here and I'm gonna be doing a little bit of a free fly. And then we're gonna be having a day and night fly over. Over our village council hall. over our village council hall. Okay, that's it for today. That is our village council of the Seaside Village. And I do hope you liked this episode. If you did, give me a thumbs up, please. If you want to see more of my content, consider subscribing. I do upload four to five day times every week right now. I don't know if I can keep that up, but I'm gonna try. And I hope to see you back in future builds or playthroughs. And for now, I'm gonna say goodbye and I'm gonna be right back with Nishan and Agans in the tenth world real soon. Bye!